I would like to reopen the regular meeting of the Village of Bronxville Board of Trustees for November 10, 2025, and ask all to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we are going to start, we have our special guest. We've been doing a little bit of, each month, having some of our, the folks who represent us come speak with us, and you've all been so great to agree. We had Senator Shelley Mayer, and we had the Westchester DA Susan Case, and today we have our Assemblywoman from our 88th District, Amy Pollan. And before I ask the Assemblywoman, I would just like to share, our careers have coincided. You're in your 25th year in Albany, and currently Amy is Chair of the Corporations, Authorities, and Commissions Committee, and you serve on the Committee of Rules, Education, and Health. You previously chaired the Committee on Energy, as well as the Committee on Libraries and Education Technology, as well as the Task Force on People with Disabilities. So you have covered just about everything there is in Albany. And I will totally say what I feel. I think Amy has been the most responsive, in my opinion, in my working together, the most responsive, the most effective, and most importantly for me, the most principled person who has represented us. So it's an honor for me personally that you are here, and thank you for all you have done. You have gotten so many grants to Bronxville, you answer every call, and you represent us at an A-plus level. So, thank you, thank you, yes. And we'd love you just to share what's going on in Albany, and perhaps how it directly affects our citizenry.
Absolutely. First, I want to thank you for inviting me, and to thank you for being who you are. Whether you realize it or not, Bronxville has had their own impact on the state and on the county. I think you know that, you know, if you had not raised the issue of Nicole Longo and your desire to promote her, we would not have seen a change in the whole county's way of looking at all of the officers. So first, you know, that really is due to your desire to do the right thing. And also, you impacted state legislation as a village when you wanted to change the speed limit on your local roads to make them safer. And instead of that becoming just a Bronxville thing, it is now open to the entire state. But it's really because you raised it, and because of your desire to go ahead. So thank you so much for being who you are, and I'm always happy to partner with the village on any issue. I'm sure every year that something happens, you know, hopefully good things that we can do together. So where we are, as far as the state goes, this is our quiet time. We're home, we're not in Albany. We do a lot of gearing up, because in January, we do go back for our legislative session and for the budget. This year, like every year, the governor will introduce her budget the third week in January, so it's coming up. That budget, we expect to be very difficult this year, because we anticipate healthcare cuts at the federal level, which will greatly impact the state budget. And health and education are really two-thirds of the state budget, so if one-third is that adversely impacted, we know that it's going to have an impact across the board. So let's hope that it doesn't, because we in Westchester do not want to see those cuts impacting education, for example, the other big piece to the state budget. We don't get that much money to begin with, you know, across the board, all of my districts, but particularly in villages like Bronxville, Scarsdale, that I represent both, we get even less because of our ability to raise property taxes. And the wealthier communities don't get as much money. So that's been my problem, you know, as much as we advocate for those funds. And this year, we were able to give an increase to the Bronxville schools, but the reality is such this year that I'm very worried about everything. So we'll see. We also go back, you know, I've had a good year, you know, the last few years, I have been able to pass many, many bills, and I'm very proud of that. But I always go in, and this is a time that I actually develop the bills, because once January hits, you know, we need to be off and running, and convincing other legislators, the leadership, and then the governor to ultimately sign it. So this is the time to develop it. So I'm telling everyone listening and out there, if you have a good idea for legislation, please don't wait, tell us now, so that we have time to work on it. And I don't know whether this is, like, whether you guys have questions, or whether that's allowed, but I'd love to hear, you know, some of your thoughts about what is happening, and answer any questions that I could potentially answer.
I would just like to ask, what sort of on your plate now as ideas for bills that you are thinking of developing?
So I'm actually the healthcare chair now. I didn't, you know...
Oh, did I?
Yeah, so I went from corporations to health. So that is because of the potential cuts, that's going to be something that we're paying a lot of attention to, and I do control or run or overview that, you know, that committee. So that's going to be a big part of next year for me. We also are looking at a lot of, you know, there's an uncertainty as it comes to vaccines, you know. We're not sure exactly what to expect. There was a little bit of confusion, let's just say, you know, with the COVID-19 vaccine, and we don't know exactly what that's going to look like. One of the things that we potentially could see is something that other states have already taken care of that we haven't, because what we worry about is some of the, you know, if, for example, COVID-19, one of the concerns was that if you're potentially getting the vaccine, you might have to see the prescriber, which would mean, you know, we're used to going to CVS down the street and getting that vaccine if we want to. Not that you have to, but if you want to, it was available in that way. If the FDA slash HHS changed those, what we call REMs, which are the requirements to, and how you get the vaccine, if there was a requirement, as was suggested, that you have to get a prescriber, you know, what can we do to still make it accessible and easy for people? So one of the things that the governor did by executive order, for example, is allow pharmacists to actually be the prescriber, but it's not in the law. And the question for the health committee will be, some states allow that uniformly, because pharmacists are very well-educated, and they have an ability, they know more about drugs frankly than anybody else, you know. I really want to know about a drug, I would call a pharmacist. So the goal, or the thought is, you know, do we give them blanket ability to prescribe? Do we do it per vaccine? Do we do it in a reactive way? You know, so we're watching it, and that's going to be an interesting conversation, and something that, you know, I've already filed a lot of bills, adjusting case bills, you know, but the truth is, we're going to want to watch that closely and see what we can do as a state to make sure that people have access to the vaccines they want, that they get them safely, and that we're not doing too much to overturn, you know, what we've seen as standard practice in medicine, which I think is important to our health and safety generally. So there's going to be a lot of that, you know, going on next year. You know, I always have a lot of, you know, I do a lot of eclectic things, you know, so I have other things. You know, I also watch education very closely, and we're lucky to have Shelley Mayer as our senator, because she chairs that in the Senate. But, you know, I have to be very cognizant, as I mentioned earlier, that I have districts that don't get a lot of money, but at the same time, rely on the money that they get. So we can't lose money. You know, many times, you know, I have this meeting I do with the business officials in my district, and the Bronxville business official gets on and always says, "Just don't cut me," you know, and that's what I'm also paying attention to. So the budget's the beginning of the legislative session, you know, now I'm developing legislation, then I'm working on the budget, and then, not that we stop working on legislation, but a lot of things stopped during the budget process to get us through that, and then we pass a lot of bills, really April, May, and June, and we're working on them throughout now till then, to make sure that happens. And that's really our process. And then from June until December, we work on the governor to get her to sign them. So that's what we're doing right now, and I still have probably half the bills, that I have two House bills, that we're still waiting for the governor. She's, I don't want to say, it's not slow, I would say meticulous, so that, you know, so that she's looking, she has counsel, they look at each element of the bill, they contact us, we do chapter amendments. This, you know, every governor is very different, and this governor really tries to work cooperatively with the legislature, so that we, at the end, can reach an agreement on a concept, so that if there's disagreement, we just don't automatically get a veto. Not that it don't get some, but we don't automatically get a veto. She works very hard to try to work on what the changes should be. I have three chapter amendments that we're working on right now, that we're negotiating with the governor's office. So that's, you know, people think, "Oh, what do we do year-round?" It's always, we're always working on legislation, we're always working with our communities on issues, and now I have the luxury of actually sleeping in my own bed.
My only question is, if you could look into, the whole use of e-bikes has outpaced the legislation, and that's something that residents call me all the time, and just doing a little bit of homework, it seems basic bikes are even regulated more, I just think that's a whole area that's affecting, you know, I hear weekly, "Why aren't you doing something?" And we don't have, we don't have any recourse, so just...
I will definitely follow up with you, we'll look at the, you know, we looked at some of that last year, because this is not, it's not new that this is an open problem.
Right.
You know, but, and I think that we did do a couple of bills, but probably they either haven't been signed or haven't started yet, so that I can look and see what we have done.
Right.
But there's definitely gaps, and you're right, we have not regulated them to the extent that we have regulated regular bicycles.
Exactly, yep.
Thanks again, Representative Pollan, for, you know, everything you do for all of us in the state and in Bronxville in particular, and I just want to echo, as I'm sure all the trustees would, the mayor's, that's what superb leadership you provided for us in Albany. I have a question in terms of managing expectations, because I read, like perhaps some other residents have read, County Executive Ken Jenkins' recent press release, basically saying that he's cut, or he anticipates cuts of around 8% across the board in county government, which I think was useful to get a ballpark as to just what some of the fiscal realities are with the current, you know, budget realities in Washington and in Albany. Do you think that, you know, 8% cuts across the board are something that's ballpark-ish for what is going to happen at the state level, or do you think it's going to be something more optimistic?
I think we just don't know. You know, for example, most of the states are in health, so I know a little bit about that because of the portfolio that I have. And the, for example, they're going to put a work requirement on Medicaid. So what does that mean? It means, what it's meant in other states that have imposed a work requirement, we've seen people fall off, like, they don't, they just don't, because they just don't fill out the paperwork, we're starting to, we're going to have to, but that doesn't start for a year. So there's a lot of things that don't start for a while, and we don't know what this year is going to be. Now, that doesn't mean that the governor may not, what I anticipate is that she's going to budget conservatively. So we will see cuts, but not do necessarily to the known cuts at the federal level, because that's going to be phased in, and it is being phased in. So the work requirement, you wouldn't think this is a big expense, but it is, to put in the infrastructure, to see whether someone doesn't or does conform to the work requirement that the federal government is now putting on as a condition to get Medicaid, that's a big expense. So that's a known expense. But we don't really know how many people are going to be uninsured, which then is going to have an impact on our hospitals. So now, in this area, we don't have that many, I mean Bronxville doesn't, Bronxville's hospital, White Plains, you know, we don't have that much Medicaid. So, but a lot of hospitals even near to us, a lot of us use the city hospitals, they will see a big impact on uninsured, and it's going to cost them big dollars. You know, what happens, you know, at the state level? Do we fill any gap, don't we? You know, who's going to get caught in the middle of being uninsured? You know, what is that all going to mean? Longer wait times at the emergency rooms, perhaps? We don't really know yet. So we don't know the absolute numbers. Everybody's been throwing out numbers, but the truth is, they're not real, not yet. Not that they won't be, and they could be worse, but we don't know.
Any other questions for the Assemblywoman?
Do you think housing compact is going to come back?
I don't think so. You know, I think together, we were able to convince the governor's office that the design didn't fit us in particular, but, you know, other communities as well. You know, I mean, you know better than anyone, you know, the ring around the tracks...
10,000 units in a community that has 2,600 units.
And the thing, you know, what was ironic about that proposal is, you know, for example, you know, in my town, Scarsdale, you can, when you draw the ring around the track, you cover Greenberg, Yonkers, Eastchester, and Scarsdale. And so who's responsible? Similarly here, right? You draw it around, you have Yonkers.
Right.
You know, Yonkers has housing, you know, so how is it counted? The proposal just, even if we think that there needs to be more housing around train stations, which, you know, as a concept, you know, architects all believe, you know, what have you, or urban planners, that was not a well-thought-out proposal, in my opinion, and I don't think yours as well, to achieve that goal. So I think that we communicated that really well, and no, don't anticipate seeing that proposal again.
Do you think, though, this bill that I'm reading about, that lets religious organizations sort of be exempt, like if a church has land, I'm just worried that this is a clever end-around instead of a developer coming in and building. That bill sort of scares me a little.
I've seen that bill floating about, I haven't seen it advance.
Okay, that's where I was...
I mean, not that it won't, you know, I don't know, but I'm aware of the issues, you know, that you're talking about, and I'm, you know, I haven't seen it advance.
Okay, that's, thank you. I just wondered how far, whether that had traction.
Last year, no. This year, we'll see.
Right.
But I'm open to the issues.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I'll just add that with respect to, you know, housing issues, unfortunately, Metro North, Harlem Line, as you know, sort of parallels the Bronx River, and here in Bronxville, as, you know, we need hardly tell you, one of the problems with, well, several problems with building along the Bronx River is that it's in the middle of a very significant flood plain. And again, thank you for all the help that you've brought to bear in Albany, as our community, and Yonkers, and Tocco, and Eastchester, and Mount Vernon have tried to deal with some of the flooding problems of the Bronx River. Again, it's in the category of problems that aren't going to be fixed overnight, but I think villagers and this Board of Trustees and the mayor have really tried to sort of take a fresh look at some of our flooding issues, to see if we can't really do something for the future, given where climate issues are going. So in this particular budget environment, we won't be expecting huge amounts of help, but again, thank you for the help that you have provided in the past, and I think that's an issue that's going to continue to be very much on this village's agenda going forward.
You've seen an unprecedented amount of flooding in this community.
Well, thank you, thank you for coming, thank you for taking your night with us, and thank you for all you do for us. Thank you, thanks. All righty, we will go on to the mayor's report, and my report is really probably the nicest one, it's just telling you all that's coming up, and all that happened, and it's all good. Halloween was great, the school, I think it was the, their council, what is the council?
Youth Council.
Youth Council, I wonder, the Youth Council did a great parade, and then I have to tell you, the merchants, the kids then continued into the village, and our merchants gave out hundreds of candy bars to the kids. We do have the most generous merchants. Last Sunday, I'm trying to do these things in order, Christchurch had its 100th anniversary from when their cornerstone was laid. They had the Episcopal Bishop of New York come and did a huge lunch for all their congregants. It was absolutely beautiful, the music was amazing. Coming up on the 21st, 7:00 PM, there's a fundraiser for Lawrence Home Care, the particular program, The Treehouse, which so many folks know, who helped the young people who have had a death in their family while they are still young people. You can still get tickets, go on their website. I went to an event, our own Columbia Presbyterian Westchester Hospital, they're starting their campaign, because they are going to have a pediatric ER that's going to be a completely separate unit for the kids. It's being headed by local resident Hugh Carey, and one family has already pledged $10 million as a matching gift. Unbelievable. So that you're going to hear about, but these are a little heads-up to things that are happening. Our wonderful Junior League is having their Thanksgiving food drive, they call it the sides, they buy everything, they pay for the turkeys and count on us to donate, and all the information, because it's a little particular on dates, times, is in our village newsletter. And thank you, Thomas, for all the work you and Helen did on the newsletter this month. But we collect the food here at Village Hall, so if you want to donate something, we have Village Hall. And given the need for food, both, basically both what's going on nationally and holidays, our government group is partnering with the police, the Bronxville School, I just worked on this yesterday, so this is kind of hot off the press, the Reformed Church, and it's kind of being spearheaded by the Community Fund, and in early December, the five of us are going to work together to collect food for feeding Westchester, with the hope that we will direct it to our neighbors, our close by neighbors who need it the most. So I'll keep you posted, because we'll need villagers again to be as generous as you always are. Mr. Palmer was at the event today, St. Joseph's, had a big event to honor the veterans, and I'll mention it, but you and I, it's one of the most touching, they had 15 veterans there, many of which were the uncles or grandparents of the students, and they do a beautiful job. And next week, they're coming over to Village Hall, I think Mr. White's 7th grade, they do a unit on local history, so we'll see St. Joe's over here. Our movie theater is just sending out their annual appeal, they need our help, they're a village charity, next year, they will hit 100 years old. We need to help them out, because believe it or not, I think it's 70% of all ticket sales for a movie go back to the movie studio. I find that appalling, but that's how the system works. So we really need to look at them like we look at our other charities, Community Fund, Janssen, and they actually had over 150 events this year, partnering with, I looked it up virtually, every school and organization in the village. So they are an incredible community asset, well beyond a movie theater. Small Business Saturday, November 29th, and there will be free parking throughout the village, some given by the village, some given by merchants, landlords, et cetera. That same morning, we have the annual Katie Welling Run over at the school, you can sign up on the internet, it's in honor of a wonderful student, who was my children's era, who was killed in a fire at her college. Our working gardeners are turning 100 years old, and...
The organization, not the gardeners themselves.
Thank you for that, that's a very important, thank you, see, that's why we need each other. Our organization, the working gardeners, are having a big event at the Field Club on the 4th, and the Junior League is bringing back their stroll on the 4th and the 5th. It's when you buy tickets in downtown to shop, you get a little Christmas stocking. There are tons of prizes in it, discounts at all the stores, it's a great way the Junior League partners with our Chamber of Commerce and our merchants. And I'm telling you, the giveaways are amazing, people win dinners for four and 50% off in stores, it's really special. On the 12th at 4:00 PM is when we light the Christmas tree, holiday tree, down in the circle near the diner, and we usually have singing and food, so mark down the 12th at 4:00, and, no, December 12th, thank you, December 12th at 4:00 PM. And I want to... And I want to Oh, mention that. Yeah, I'll have you mention that because you know more about, see, I knew I was going to forget something. I want to mention that we lost our, he passed away, wonderful Judge George Mayer, who was an institution, a quintessential Bronxville resident, a fire commissioner, a judge, a volunteer. And George passed away, and we will just miss him because he was a real part of the fabric of Village Hall and the village. And, and I just want to just say thank you to all our veterans. And we have a, I love our display outside that we put up for Veterans Day, the 4th of July. And just thank you to all our veterans. And trustees in particular, I need your help because I probably missed something when I was trying to do these.
Well, I heard a trustee nap on Christmas on Craft, but do we have a date for the tree lighting on Leonard Moran Square, the tree lighting and menorah lighting?
The menorah date, December 5th at 5:00 PM. Is that correct in my memory? Maybe not. That's a good point because we just learned that date.
That one I have to look up. But now, but, but the, the lighting on, tree lighting on Craft, as the mayor said, is that Sunday. So that's December, that's December 7th from Craft. The menorah date, I have to look up, but the rabbi did, did give that to me.
Yeah, for some reason, I think, we'll clarify that because that's important. That's over at Leonard Moran Square. And we always have a nice festival over there with the rabbi and our, our group and our police love to go. So thank you for reminding us of that. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Yeah, so the, the menorah lighting is going to be Monday, December 15th at 5:00 PM.
So maybe it would be helpful if on, somewhere on the website, we just have like that two weeks of Christmas.
Yep.
Because there's a lot of like the Chamber of Commerce things and then the tree lightings and
Yes.
All the other things.
There's so many.
There are lots of different moving pieces. So the Christmas on Craft on the 7th, basically a whole day starting at 10:00 AM. I believe the picture house is showing a movie in the morning.
Oh, wow.
You go in, the little kids go in their pajamas.
Oh, the pajama movie. Right? Yeah.
And then at 4:00 PM, there's the Christmas on Craft where the diner and the local restaurants are going to have the poco and the food, and people will sing.
Picture with Santa.
Picture with Santa. They'll have carolers. And then at 5:30 is that tree lighting. It's a really nice morning and afternoon.
Thank you for adding to that because, perfect. Anything else, trustees?
It's a great idea that if we can post that on the village website somewhere.
Because there's so many nice things, and they're all open and public and happy, and they welcome everyone to come. So this would be great if we can post it. All right? Any, any other trustee? Did I miss anything?
Nope, nothing.
No? Okay, then we'll go right to our village administrators' report.
Just a couple of housekeeping items. Village Hall is closed tomorrow, and Remembrance of Veterans Day, Observance of Veterans Day, as you just mentioned there, also closed on Thanksgiving Day.
So there's no trash pickup?
No trash pickup. All village offices closed. Also, no trash pickup and offices closed on Thanksgiving, November 27th. Believe it or not, we're starting to talk about these dates. And also, as you mentioned just, the DPW, of course, is shifting gears, and they did a wonderful job once again setting up the display for veterans out in the corner. But curbside leaf collection well underway. The crews worked this weekend to get a head start on it, given that we had a day off last week. And then, of course, they're already starting to test our holiday lights and work on, work on getting those up over the course of the next couple of weeks. But, and to just put a plug in for trustee Barron, who always does bring up the newsletter, many of the items that the board mentioned, those dates, and there are a lot, are in the newsletter. So if you didn't get it in an email, please sign up. But we'll also make arrangements to take all that, put it somewhere on the, on the homepage. Just emphasis again on the leaf collection program. Please try not to put your leaves out in the street. The DPW is getting to every street at least once a week, so please just be patient, but don't put the leaves next to catch basins. What was it? The previous Thursday, we had a significant rain event in a short amount of time, and leaves that collect, there's just going to be a certain amount of leaves that are going to make it to the catch basin to begin with, but we don't want piles there. Just also want to emphasize, we're still trying to get other projects done. Paving and milling and paving is scheduled this week in certain neighborhoods. Emails have already been sent on that. And we also have several areas that I was expressing to trustee Fredericks, where we'll be doing some tree planting in the coming, in the coming weeks, including some replacement trees in Malpe, addition of a new tree along Cedar Street near the exit of the Street to Street lot, where we're going to break up some of that concrete. Also hoping to still get some of the Flexi pave installation in and around those downtown tree pits up there. It's been on my list. And, and then also wanted to mention that the, maybe the deputy mayor, trustee Fredericks will explain this further, but the, the board has established a committee to develop the landscaping plan for the subsequent development of the Crawford Drainage Improvements. And the committee's going to be having their first Zoom meeting this week. Committee's representative of trustees, as well as residents that abut the park, as well as representatives of the community who have spent a lot of time working in the park and putting plantings in the park. So more to be continued on that. And just as our assembly one was here, Amy Pollan, speaking about flooding, where several flooding projects continue to be in the works. One of those that we discussed last week at length, myself and staff, was with the New York State Department Environmental Conservation's team and their report that the village had received a grant under through the Resilient New York Program, and they're studying in the Bronx River corridor. So just an ongoing project. We have monies that the, the village is going to be obtaining from FEMA of up to $2 million, which we're continuing to work our way through that project, which is very exciting. But likewise, we're, we're meeting and reviewing with the DEC, at least on a monthly basis, to go over what can be done with the river itself. And I do have to update you, Mayor, on those discussions regarding removal of, a project to remove some of that sedimentation buildup and bank stabilization. Fortunately, we did have representatives, the deputy commissioner of the county parks was on that call, and we, we, we absolutely can do something in that area. And the DEC understands that, the importance of that. And we also talked about adding stream gauges back to our section of the Bronx River where they used to be, and those have been removed in the state. The DEC was supportive of that. That's important to be able to have accurate data. So lots going on on that Paxton, Paxton corridor, which is just very complex.
Okay. All right, then we will move forward. I would need a motion in a second to approve minutes from the executive session, the work session, and the regular meeting of October 14th, as well as our special meeting of October 30th. Do I? In a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor, just one other item in terms of new business forthcoming. I believe that Take Back Day is November 22nd, which is coming up in 12 days. So, you know, the usual array of, you know, shredding machines and people who want to donate clothing, get rid of electronics, you know, the, the usual drill for those who have done it before. But thanks, I guess, are in order to our Green Committee members for all their work in doing that. Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, that's Saturday, November 22nd.
Perfect. Thank you for adding that. Thank you.
Jim, can you just mention, we have two police officers. Could you mention that?
Yes, the, the latest, the latest hire actually just began on Friday. Officer Amble, is it? And yes, just
Could we have them maybe come to our next meeting? And folks could see, you know, recognize their faces, meet them, and just a thought?
Great idea.
Okay.
That brings us up to
I think maybe 23. I think 23. I know.
We're still short police officers, so, but we are interviewing and have the most incredible candidates, so many of them coming, frankly, hundreds of resumes coming from New York City.
And then just one more thing, and I know I sound a little bit like a broken record on this at times, but Thomas Morzello in particular has done a great job in now loading onto the website the village's new tree policy, which in particular provides procedures and for a period of time, potential for a significant subsidy for villagers who may be interested in getting a new tree planted adjacent to their property. And for residents who live in an apartment, the program, you know, is certainly open to apartment building owners and appropriate cooperative associations. So if someone lives in an apartment building, so says it would be really nice to have a beautiful sycamore tree, or a sugar maple, or an oak tree in this spot in the village right away near our apartment building, or again, if it's just a resident in front of where they are, go to the website and give Assistant Village Administrator Thomas Morzello a phone call. He will be delighted to receive, or send him an email. But the village is going to be planning on submitting an order in the early winter, probably in the February time period. So the November, December time period is a good time for people to be thinking, residents to be thinking, gee, if it would be nice to have a tree on my street, go to the website, contact Mr. Morzello, and get in line to, to get a tree. It's taking that to the subsidy program we have.
Should they call you like after midnight? Is that kind of
Can we give them your personal cell phone number?
Yes, great. Thank you, Thomas. Okay. All right, I'm going to, we have just four kind of very normal pieces of business. The first one is what I always sign is a renewal of an intermuscible agreement with Westchester County Department of Public Safety Services. Our police department uses their county firing range because we obviously don't have one here, though when I first became a trustee, there was a default one in the basement, if you can believe it. And we had to spend a fortune getting rid of the lead, the lead. It was unbelievable downstairs. So we're happy. We go to the county, and we're just extending our current agreement for another five years. So do I have a motion?
I'll move that.
In a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. And then village administrator, do you want to do the, our Aware Crime Program with Yonkers?
Sure. This is, this is a new, actually, a new one-year agreement. Again, compliments to the police chief, the lieutenants for forming this partnership with the city of Yonkers to allow the city to monitor, if you will, our surveillance cameras and new LPR license plate readers on, in the village in real time. And since they have obviously a much larger staffing unit, and as these license plate readers and cameras run through thousands of plates in a matter of minutes, and through this software that the city has, they'll get a warning or a hit, if you will, of potential violation or crime, and then will immediately notify our police department. So they literally have just staff manning that, and they're willing to take that on at no, at no cost to the village. So.
All right, I will move that.
Okay, well, second it.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And I have to thank, we do, if you see on occasion, some of the Yonkers officers in the village, they partner with us on so many things because they're what, the third largest city in the state now, and they have so many kind of units that we don't have, animal control, just different things. And they help us. We have a terrific relationship with the Yonkers Police. So I always make sure to just say thank you because they're great.
And Mayor, I was trying to find the details in my phone and my emails, but I, I think it's worth noting that Chief Satrioli, in conjunction with some other police departments, secured a $200,000 grant in the past month for enhancements to police services, which I think, again, is just a testament to the quality of the folks we have at City Hall in terms of reaching out proactively with other jurisdictions, finding ways to, you know, apply for grants, which, you know, is money that we don't have to, to pay for. And again, I've forgotten the details, but I do recall it was a $200,000 grant.
Perfect. That's good to mention.
That's funding our record, updating the records management system.
Yes.
Perfect. All right, our next one is again, one I sign. It's a, an amendment to the New York State Department of Transportation, Snow and Ice Agreement for 2025, 2026. We have an existing agreement, and we're reimbursed by the state of New York based on a very established formula that includes lane mileage and annual, frankly, severity of the weather. So this is to continue our agreement with DOT.
Every year.
Every year. Yes. Do I have a motion to continue?
I will.
In a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Sadly, I think for our $9,000 reimbursement, we You end up doing, I know, I know. And it's, you end up getting multiple, because they, they change it because, as the mayor explained, there's a calculation on equipment and labor costs, and it gets adjusted multiple times with the inflation factor. But generally speaking, we get a max $9,000, but they like these agreements, all resolutions in triplicate, and yes, you'll probably see it again in another six months.
I took that one because I did want to raise his blood pressure because if for $9,000, we'd probably spend that amount going through hoops, but that's the way it goes. All right? So all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The motion passes. And then we just have one more Resolution D. Mr. Palmer?
Yes, and this, this resolution is for the restoration of the Milburn Street retaining wall. In summary, you're authorizing retaining this group of engineers with expertise in geotechnical analysis and working with our engineer, and also authorizing debt service for $800,000 to allow for the restoration of the wall.
This is for folks who, it's the wall behind at the rear of the Avalon apartment complex. And council tried very hard, thank you, council, to give ownership to someone else, but the village was the lucky winner of owning those steps, so, and the wall, and it knew we have to take care of it.
But we are proceeding carefully, cautiously, but continuing to move along. As you know, we As you know, we had an initial review of the wall and we're moving to the next level with the hopes of being able to work with these engineers to prepare those bid documents over the course of the winter.
I'll move that.
All right. I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's a big amount of money, but it's nothing... We have to do it. So in many ways, it's easy because there's no choice.
Yeah.
All righty.
And then I think just residents should know that I think the preferred option right now is to have the stairway just take one track. If you look at the stairway from the bottom, there's sort of two entrances up to the stairs. It would obviously be additional expense to nicely redo the two sets of stairs going up. But I think, Mr. Palmer, the thought is to do the one set of stairs is sufficient. We aren't building the staircase to the Opera Garnier in Paris, but we want it to be safe and we want it to be functional and reasonably cost efficient.
Thank you. Can I ask for another update on the solar that's going with the...
Fair question. Went to review by Con Ed, which needs to approve the project. And Con Ed sent some additional requirements back to Croton Energy, which is the low bidder. And they in turn made those design changes and it's back to Con Ed and Con Ed's portal for review. So we have three projects with varying levels of intensity of Con Ed review.
Yeah. That's all.
Thomas knows. It's a weekly call to Con Ed.
Yes, yes.
And I have a quick question. There was some Metro North work going on on the inbound platform. Metro North people were sort of cutting through the metal bases of sort of the rear railing. Do you have any idea what they've been doing?
No. No, I didn't.
They don't always tell us.
They didn't tell us. I can tell you that.
They will. Maybe I'll ask them next time.
This is inbound as in northbound?
Southbound.
Southbound. Cutting the railings.
Yeah, exactly, crew. You know, you have the metal railings on the side opposite the train platform itself so no one accidentally falls over into the bushes or the undergrowth. And they were sort of chopping through some metal things and whatnot. I'll see if I can find...
We got no notice here, so.
Not aware of any current...
We weren't tearing anything down. It didn't look too dramatic, but.
All right. Did we miss anything? Thank you all for mentioning all those honestly really important events because the thought of not including everybody would... And we will get them all up. And I just encourage people, we have so many good things happening in the next month, that go to the Village website and we'll make sure it has time, dates, and, you know, all the activities.
May I just briefly mention, congratulations to Kara Cronin, newly elected mayor of Toccoho. And the four of us all had the pleasure of having dinner with our colleagues in Toccoho, which I think is a nice tradition, Mayor, that you started and started her administration. Of course, we wish her and all her colleagues at Toccoho well and congratulate them on their election.
Terrific. No, you're absolutely right.
When did she get sworn in? When does that occur?
December, I think.
We're all invited, I think it's December 1. And I just got a message, it's a Monday night and it's not our meeting because we're the next Monday. And we were all invited to attend her swearing in, which again, we have great connection with our colleagues in Toccoho. So I will make sure you all get the invitation, but I know it's the first at 7:00 p.m. Thank you. See, I don't know what we'd do without each other. We make a good team. All righty, then I'm going to open it up to anybody who would like to talk on any subject and if you would just tell us your name. And thank you for coming.
Anthony Fiori, Riden Place, Toccoho, New York. I know election season's over, but there is another one. Fire Commissioner's election is December 9th between 2:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m. So Village residents will vote here at Village Hall. I am running it again. I'm going to try it again. If anybody needs more election information or absentee ballot, just go to eastchesternewyorkfd.gov, all lowercase.
Okay. So there's absentee's available for...
Yeah, just got to fill out a form, mail it in, and they send you an absentee ballot.
Okay. And I just want to reiterate, that's for one commissioner for a five-year term, December 9th, 2:00 to 7:00 voting at Village Hall.
2:00 to 9:00.
Yeah. Okay.
2:00 p.m., 9:00 p.m., right here at Village Hall.
Oh, got you. Okay. Perfect. Thank you for bringing that forward.
Election season is over. No, there's still one more left. All right. Thanks a lot.
Thank you for coming. Yeah. Thank you. All right. Do we have any... Again, that was so helpful. Thomas, another thing to put on our website because that's important. Because the fire district has a large budget and so all our residents are affected by choices made.
Pay more for our protection than we do for our police protection.
Yes. So get out there and make your voice heard on this one, as on everything. So, thank you. All righty. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
In a second. All those in favor? Aye. All right. And our next meeting is on the 8th of December. So we will be back here. And I just want to thank our staff, our treasurer, who comes to all our board meetings, even though she has an hour-plus ride home, and Thomas. And Thomas, you got tasked with a lot tonight. So thank you for both of you always being here.
Now, just on that note, I should say our auditors just completed their audit. So another terrific report for the Village. Lori just makes it amazingly smoothly, is what the O'Connor Davies team always tells us. So we should be getting, and that was just finalized, I think, today. So you'll be getting bound copies of that in the coming weeks. Always something to look forward to for December, too.
Our auditors love our treasurer, Lori Boss. They think we may pay them too much because she does it, she makes it so easy, they will admit. So thank you. All righty. We'll see everybody in December. We are officially adjourned.